Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
We are the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone signed up to speak this evening?
There is not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so go through you. There are minutes from our May 6, 2021 meeting. Please review them for any additional solutions or corrections.
I have two corrections.
Okay.
Under motion authorizing the village manager to negotiate, I thank Mr. Henderson and staff for the work of putting the plan together. And I thank Von Kuschner and Waste Management for their service. It makes it look like I thanked them to help put the plan together as well. I just want to make sure that we're clear that it was for service to putting the plan together. And then in the village services report, that first sentence, I don't remember thanking the board for its vote on a new refuse community. And the thanks to Waste Management was done during our discussion, across the discussion. So it should have just started with thanking trustee Pope and trustee Robinson.
That's it.
For me. All right, I just didn't want to see that.
Well, they kind of did by not bidding project down low. So for us to go with the other.
That is an interpretation.
Any other comments? Any other comments or concerns with the minutes as presented? And I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 6, 2021.
So move the amendment.
Second. Any other questions for House?
Soder.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Pope.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Strini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
We'll ship his six year.
You're here for your newspaper. All right, I am now going to open the public hearing for the amendment to the annexation agreement that's in your packet with Briar Hill Ventures. Mr. Huester.
Mr. President, so you have a copy in your in your packet of the notification for this public hearing. It was published in the Daily Herald newspaper to announce public hearing this evening, ready comment on a proposed amendment to the annexation agreement that's previously been approved. This company Briar Hill Ventures has not yet acquired this property. So the original agreement called for them to do that, and they they projected that they would do that within a certain time after the initial approval. However, they've had some obstacles to concluding that acquisition and have come before you tonight for an extension of time. So there'd be an additional 180 days that they would ask to be able to conclude their acquisition of the property so as to conclude the annexation. And secondarily, their surveyor in checking the legal description of the property that's to be annexed. And you'll recall there were two parcels. There's about 11 acres to the north and additional seven acres to the south. The seven acre piece on the south is already in the village. So the annexation deals with that piece that is not in the village. And then the agreement talks about development of the entire parcel, two pieces together. So that's just a scribbler's error to be straightened out for the legal description behind this.
Mr. Henderson.
If there's any members of the public that are here to comment, that would be now would be the time to call for that. And I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Henderson. That's all I was gonna say. There are no questions.
Any members of the public have anything to say about the annexation amendment? Okay.
Briar Hills attorney, I noticed Mr. Mop than on, we don't have questions.
Yes, I.
Just so you can answer that, he's the attorney for Briar Hill Ventures.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, do I do I need to entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Please.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Any other questions? Can I roll call, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Pope.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Strini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Soder.
Hi.
Yes, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing we have on the agenda, village managers' report is an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to the annexation agreement by and between the village of Hampshire and Briar Hill Ventures to extend the closing period to 180 days to November 16, 2021.
Is there any discussion about this? What was the original date?
It was 90 days. I believe it expired in April.
And so now we're extending an additional 180, not from 90 to 100. Put it into the big 270. What's the propensity for the purchase to take place during that 180 days?
Well, the reason for the delays are.
No, the confidence level that this will be the only extension of the annexation agreement that we'd be doing.
Well, I guess that's never to be guaranteed. Mr. Reed and I did, Herr Reed and I did meet with them just this week. And they shared with us plans that I think will get them started pretty quick.
Okay, and my question isn't whether to not, that I'm opposed to an extension. Is this extension long enough to allow for whatever that means?
The challenge they're having is is cost of materials, like everybody else's construction cost dramatically. So I'm looking at this whether I'll turn this.
I can speak to the meeting that we had this past week. And I can just tell you that they're absolutely sincere and willing to go forward. I mean, they they it's not one of these things that you get a feel for some of this stuff where they're coming in just to ask for things, to ask for things. These guys are they're they feel really bad and it's taking as long as it is right now.
No, I completely understand and respect that. I guess the reason for my question is, is 180 days long enough? Or should this be to extend longer than 180 days to allow? Should there be more time given?
I believe at this point, trustee Kelly would be difficult to do that. We just closed the public hearing, so it could be difficult.
So yes, differentness, and I think we reassess anyway.
Yeah. We reassess it. Reevaluate it for 180 days. All right. Let's hope we don't need to do that.
Well, no, that's what as. At a good point. Then maybe do. Again, same.
All my other questions are going to be answered just because it's the document we're going to switch the mayor, right?
Well, yeah.
I'm just making.
I noticed that too.
Definitely so. There'll be a few of those things pop up. It's actually a piece of letter that is in your packet tonight. If you're wrong names on it, some apologies for that.
That's okay. I can that's why I kind of went back for the original document. And then same question was 180 days more or what? So.
You guys are all keeping track of the times, like you're not going.
Sorry, one more question for Mr. Huester. There are red line edits in amendment exhibit A that redefine some of the definition of the parcel that are part of the original agreement.
It's. It well, it it a tail, the legal descriptions were part of the original agreement, exhibit A and exhibit B. And the red line is to indicate that there will be a correction in that in this amendment.
It's the it's the amount of acres that Mark mentioned earlier.
Okay.
The two parcels originally said they're annexing 18 acres, but in fact, some of those acres are already in the village. So they're actually just annexing now 11.8 acres.
Gotcha. Okay, so that's just a redefine. There is a redefinition of the physical place. Okay, I didn't know that was a holdover from an earlier.
Any other questions or discussion on this topic? I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 21-16, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to the annexation agreement by and between the village of Hampshire and Briar Hill Ventures, without L. Steve.
So move.
Second. Questions for House?
Mr. Pope.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Soder.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Strini.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
We'll ship his six year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item is we have a presentation tonight on the annexation and zoning of Hampshire 90 Logistics Park. Mike Azola from Entrez Commercial Realty is with us for the former current board members, I should say. Continuing board members, you've seen this presentation a few months back for the new board members. This is a park near 90 that Mike Azola talked about. And this will be going to the Planning and Zoning Commission next week. So we wanted to make this presentation to you before it goes to them. And ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation that we have finally. So this is just an informal presentation. Thank you. I was here about a year and a half when we started this project. COVID obviously hit us all in, but the industrial business did unbelievably well last year. So we've been able to get resurrected again. And since the first of the year, we've had some great activity, and the activity down at 47 and 90 hasn't hurt that. And with that, the announcement that distribution center there. So all I wanted to do tonight with the new board, new mayor, congratulations, is come in. I have a video that will explain a lot of this. And then any questions you might have, as Jay said, I'll be back Monday in front of the C and Z to go through the fact that we are going to want to change the zoning slightly on the Wayne Hummer Trust parcel. That's about 74 acres from OM to M2. We've done this several times lately. And then we are going to bring in the Lyon parcel, which is 10 and a half acres. It's part of this and and zone it the same. So we'll be going through that process here shortly. So we show the video and then any questions I can answer. Sorry. This is this happened last time I was here too. So be patient.
I was modeling with Mark before.
We saw it. We have witnessed.
Yes, and it wasn't a family vacation.
So maybe a little bit of background, how long have we been trying to do something with this parcel? Just I think the new board members might get a check on it.
Oh, well, see, I'm pretty old. I started working on this parcel over 25 years ago. And my clients bought the farm, literally bought the farm. And the first time we really got active in 2003, I came in, brought Cisco Asian Foods. That's now Buckhead Meats. And we built that. There's still a bunch of infrastructure on that side of the street. That was phase one. Everything went quiet. And you started resurrecting this a few years ago. Pet egg came along. They went not in the park, but a little bit west. And then since the rezoning that we did, we have now two buildings being built in the phase one park, EK Logistics and Freight Unit. So what we're working on here is phase two, and that's the it's 85 acres across the street. That's just been a part of the farm all along. We've got the pipeline and the wetlands to the east that we're dealing with. It won't be one to stay out of there. And now it matured enough with everything happening in the area that we felt it was time to really get this thing out there. And that's what we've been doing short of COVID. I'd like a paper ready. That's marketing video. And obviously, it covers A to Z. I mean, that's it's all concept. There's nothing there that's solid. But it's our view of biggest thing you can possibly think of to what really maybe what we think will happen in the market. So we're marketing a wide range of things and fielding lots of different inquiries now. But we do believe it will be logistics, transportation hub. That's and it's not small. Across the street, there are small lots. This would be minimums, probably 20 plus acres for users who are old. So it just depends on what comes along. So we're prepping with the annexation now with Leon and the zoning, rezoning for all of this to come together. And then we hope this season, we can we can really identify, nail something down that we'll be able to start next year. We'll see.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Azola?
Just one. So often in commercial real estate, like especially in retail, there is that the the trailblazers that go in that look for the hay sites and they build regardless of what it looks like. They're looking for their town. And then there are everybody else that looks to where those trailblazers build, and then they build all around, right? They know they've done their market research. Does that happen in transportation and logistics? And will the Amazon facility off of Raymond 47 cause a similar interest in the area for that? I think it just.
And and not only that, but but over the years now with I-90, the improvement of I-90, we get to we get to O'Hare in 30 minutes. We get to Rockford Airport. So we're sitting right between Roth and interchange. So all of those factors play into not just Amazon. I mean, that's big. That's you. You've got Weber, you've got Amazon, and there is a third one. We'll see what happens there. But that just sets us up for all the other things that can go on around it. And that's what we're playing into here. Mike, what is your reason for getting this all zoned ahead of time before you go marketing? Part of it's flexibility for us. The other part is we've learned again over the last few years with especially these logistics, transportation clients, they are very skittish about zoning and annexation. So for us to be able to say, look, you're set there. You still have to approve your project. You still have engineering to do. You still have a project to approve, but you are you're zoning, your use is approved. Across the street on a much smaller scale with the two buildings for building, that was a huge attractor to those particular companies. They feel safe, if you will, that, yes, I'm welcomed here. And yet it's all very industrial. So it's giving us flexibility and giving these prospects a comfort level that we can go. And when they go, they go fast. It's not something that they set on for very long. They they want to go now. And so that's what we're trying to make out.
Newer trustees such as me, annexation and the zoning, where is it being annexed from incorporated or?
It's ag.
Oh, so that's okay.
What's happened here over all these years, Wayne Hummer Trust Farm surrounded the Lyon parcel. The guy was sitting in the middle. We knew it. We knew who he was. We'd never really need to deal with each other. When this came in, I started talking to Joe Lyon, the trustee, and he was all in. So we kind of combined. And as as a group, we put both parcels under contract and been working both simultaneously. Both owners have approved to go forward no matter what. In my world, a lot of times, owners will say, you're not going to do anything until you close on the property. And both of these, who we know, said, no, I'm in. You do it now, get it done, we'll sign it up, and they get to use it. So I've got some great relationships with the owners that are helping.
Is it is it in, I mean, is it in Hampshire proper then right now?
Yes.
It is. Okay, that's solid.
If you looked at that piece, it's a little square right in the middle of it. So it's just been a little farmette that's been there for many, many, many years. And we'll just bring and and ultimately, when this gets done, that'll all get consolidated. Talked with Mark and I've talked a little. We'll talk with a future user so that they're not straddling parcels and all that. That we don't need to do now. That can be done later as we better identify the use. We want to see use. I don't want to do anything and find out I did something that now I can't use it. So we're waiting for the first major user to really set the color apart.
And and you are going for the Planning and Zoning Commission on Monday, correct?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yes. Then I hope you back you guys will go through that all well. Then I'd be back mid to whenever. We have no super urgency, but because of the season, we want to get through with you guys doing well, doing correctly, and then be set.
One final question. Do you restate the zones and then tell me what those codes mean?
We're going with Wayne Hummer Trust. It's OM, Office Manufacturing.
Okay.
And we're changing that to M2, which is the general industrial district. And the difference is is really with M2, it allows a little bit more of the trucking and logistics work than in OM. It was just pure warehouse, then then OM would be fine. And same with Lyon. Lyon, we have done that. So that's just another step. But the zoning would be exactly the same. And that's agged in the company. Mike, trustee Paul Strini's question, that the one parcel does have to see the annex. Yes. Yes. Yeah, that's 10 and a half, I was at 85 acres. So it's a small part, but it's a critical part. Okay, I'll be back to see. I'll see you there Monday. Thanks very much. At this time, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to provide a little explanation for you tonight. The next item is an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation regarding the intersection of Route 72 and State Street. There was an oversight by staff, and I apologize for that. So next to your desk, you have a the agenda supplement and a motion. So I'm going to read that motion. It's not on your agenda, but the item is on your agenda since the actual agreement is on your agenda. So we can't act on it tonight. So I would ask, Mr. Mayor, a consideration of a motion to approve the funding resolution included in exhibit B, the intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation.
You provide a little bit of background, because this is the first time that many of us are seeing this.
Sure. The village has been working with IDOT since 2015 on the improvements and improving the intersections at State Street, Route 72. You've all been in the village longer than I have. You know that that intersection cars really bad when you get rain. I've done wood. We haven't had any of those rains yet this year. But this has been in the planning for quite a long time. And it'd be also improving the crosswalks, the sidewalks. And it's a significant improvement. The village has, having your packet the budget. If you'd like to, we could go through the budget tonight. The village board has passed this, voted to approve this and to fund it. Tonight is just simply the intergovernmental agreement that that really consolidates all the work that's been done up until now. And what is required by IDOT people, they can go out to bid. They are ready to go out to bid now. It's part of the G. So this project is expected to be bid in June, be awarded in July, and have construction begin in September and begin in November. The question once before was, will it coincide with St. with Streetscape Downtown? It should not. Streetscape is scheduled to be finished in early September, hopefully by Labor Day weekend is our target. This project won't start until October. So they're and they're part of a part that they're really not impacted by each other. But I will say that the states have been very good to work with. This board asked for a couple of accommodations. They were able to give us two of those accommodations, a couple that were not able to accommodate. But IDOT has been good to work with us. I appreciate that. Certainly entertaining questions. But the first motion is simply the document you have laying before you. And that's, again, it's an appendix to the intergovernmental agreement. It pretty much just says that we can bet to our funding levels that are going to improve.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the funding resolution as included in exhibit B of the intergovernmental agreement with the White Department of Transportation. Resolution number. All right, so we have first, we have a second.
Second.
Questions for House?
Question on number two. Is it standard for for the village to pay 80% upfront of the lump sum fee for construction work when we're doing construction for the village?
You mean as a standard for the village or standard for IDOT?
I mean for the, so this is work that we were asking to have, that's $435,000. And they're stating that before the construction starts, an upfront payment of 80% of that amount needs to be paid. Is that standard?
I can't really answer whether it's standard or not. Trust trustee Kelly, I've never dealt with this before.
Yeah.
Can you speak to that, Tim?
Yeah, that is IDOT standard that was in the they had stated that in the letter of intent from 2016. So it's been the way this project at least has been set up since we started talking to IDOT about it.
In EDI's experience and IDOT projects, is this a standard motion for IDOT projects outside of this village one?
Um, I I, yes, it is. I mean, that's not always the same. But on these kind of intergovernmental agreements where they're doing a project where it is the village's utilities primarily, you know, items that the village are going to own and maintain that that the agreement is generally about 80% upfront, and then the remainder is paid at completion based on actual quantities. So actual construction cost. So at the, you know, the the last 20% may be a different amount than, you know, the 20% remaining of the 455, depending upon how the the, you know, the award comes in and how construction goes.
I would just like to have the trustees who are new on the board, since Tim mentioned it, and thank you for inviting me, Tim. A big portion of the cost to the village is because there's we have a lot of infrastructure, water lines, sewer lines, and sanitary sewer lines under that intersection. And we don't want them to tear that and repave over that same infrastructure without repairing it. In fact, some of that infrastructure is sold. It does not it no longer meets the current standards for separation and safety. So the majority of the village's cost of this is for our own infrastructure, which we will own it up and maintain in perpetuity. Some of it, which was in their in their right of way, they are helping fund even some of our local infrastructure. But if it's not in the right of way, then it's entirely our expense. So our own staff at EDI have defined that infrastructure, those costs, and have engineered those costs, engineered those items. And then all the overall engineering, everything will be bid by IDOT at their expense. So they're taking care of all of this. Absolutely. You don't need to, I can hear you just speak.
So if I can just clarify then, so after tonight, this is going to authorize payment of 300, I figured 348,444 dollars, then we're going to cut a check now, like at the next meeting, we'll authorize it. And then at the then afterwards, and when it's done, then we'll cut the last check. But for right now, it's it's kind of like this is coming in our funds now. My experience is they'll actually send us an invoice. So we will not, we'll cut the check until we receive their.
It's, yeah, it'll be out after they award the contract. So they are going out to bid. Now, I think they've delayed the the bid date to July. So by the time they go through their contracting process and award, it'll probably be, you know, August, September, when they award the contract, and then the village would receive the invoice. So you would anticipate that would be due September, October, in that timeframe.
Sent us the bill or not sent us the bill?
Yeah, they sent it to my email account.
Didn't, yeah, didn't they send us, didn't they not send us a bill for something? And then all of a sudden, we got it not too long ago. Maybe not a few years ago, whatever. They sent us a check or they sent us. They sent us a check or they sent us an invoice for a magic that.
It was the real issue of the water main and the toilet line, that was eerie, yes.
Yeah, and it was completely out of the blue.
Like, yeah, I had no idea.
Yeah, I think it was before your time, the finance director.
Exactly, oh my gosh.
They sent us a bill and we're like, where the heck can we pull this from?
They also sent this intergovernmental agreement only to in-house IDOT personnel, and then asked us why we hadn't approved it yet three months later, just last week. So, yeah, they're a little, state, I would say, is a little handicapped.
Okay, so I have a first and second, do we have any other questions? And then we'll call the votes, please.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Fodor?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coe?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Constine?
Hi.
What's your case here?
Now that we have the resolution passed, now we actually need to approve the intergovernmental agreement to authorize this. So, there's really no need for the additional discussion, we just need to pass the resolution before we can pass the intergovernmental agreement. Although, Mr. Edgus did tell me that the language in both of the documents were ambiguous as to which one had to happen first, but that's par for the course for the state. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement of the state of Illinois, IDOT, for intersection improvement along State Street and Route 72. Any other questions or comments? And then we'll call the votes, please.
Ms. Constine?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Mr. Coe?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Fodor?
Hi.
And Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
What's your case here?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the next item we have on the agenda is a motion to approve an intergovernmental, excuse me, an ordinance amending the regulations concerning water and sewer connections in the village and establishing new connection fees. What we've learned recently is that our commercial building fees only go up to two inches. And right now, we have to calculate beyond that, and we're finding that there's people who are interested in building some buildings in the village and their quality, and can't quite understand how to calculate these fees, and they seem to be rather hot. So, with that being the question, I'm going to ask Josh to give you some details, and I'll explain what we're proposing.
Yes, so the current ordinance calls for specific fees up to two-inch water meters. After that, there's a rather complicated calculation that requires observing the use of water for thirty days and making a calculation after that. So, instead of doing that more complex thing that takes time, we surveyed six communities nearby or similar size and see how they did their connection fees. Did find that our current fees are about in the middle, we're pretty competitive as far as what our fees actually are. So, this doesn't really change the fees, it just extends the schedule from a two-inch meter up to six-inch meters. And then beyond a six-inch meter, it makes the calculation very simple to figure out what the fee would be for a larger size. Additionally, it also makes it clear that multifamily buildings, apartments or condos, those are still commercial buildings for the purpose of building. That's, I wouldn't say it's completely that way in every community, but it is not uncommon. And our permit fees work that way, we're commercial, or we're multifamily, or considered commercial, so this would standardize that within our own code. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and you can see this got the letter packet.
Are there any changes to the residential rates?
The only change would be that the current code identifies one, two, and three-bedroom apartments as residential, and this would change that type of building, that type of use, multifamily, to commercial. Other than that, it doesn't actually change the rates.
And let me clarify that, that's only if there's a single meter, then a commercial building.
Aside from that, no other, like if I look at multi-bedroom condos or townhouse or duplex or one-bedroom townhouse or duplex, those are exactly the same.
Correct. And that's due to them having their own meters, right?
Right.
It's only in instances where it's a shared meter.
Well, I know, I just, it made me think of something. How large is the meter? If we look at commercial, like we have one inch, one and a half inch, two inch. What's the size of a meter for a residential, for a residential home?
Technically, technically like five-eighths of an inch, five-eighths by to three-quarters, but they, it's all charged down to one inch, they call them one-inch meter.
Why don't we charge twice the amount of one inch? For a one-bedroom townhouse with duplex and multiples of that for a single-family residence, compared to their commercial?
So, it's all, I think it was originally calculated based on population equivalent that normally is housed in those types of structures. So, like a single-family home is usually a family versus in a park, a townhome is generally a couple, or, you know, they do it, that's how they based it, I believe.
It's a commercial building, that commercial building with a one or two-inch water line, they just have one bathroom?
Oh, is, is that what you were talking about, I'm sorry, I just.
I'm comparing the commercial cost versus the residential. That's why I asked the size of a residential, because if I was trying to understand, like, is there really a four-inch meter going into a single-family house, or?
No, so, so, to compare the commercial to the, to the residential, you have to keep in mind that oftentimes, commercial, like Jay said, they're having bathrooms and, you know, a sink in the kitchen type of thing, versus running your dishwasher and your washing machine.
Understood.
So, yeah, it's based on.
Okay.
We don't, we have condos. That come on.
That'd be similar to apartments, multifamily.
What are you referring to as a condo?
Unless it's.
I guess, I guess that's your, what's your definition of condo?
Well, we, I have, in real estate, you have townhouses and you have condos. And my question was, just, should condos be included in this?
So, like, and that's, that's why I'm asking what your definition of condo is, so like, when you say condo, you're talking like a row house, you know, with one house after another?
Yes, multiple.
And in that instance, they would typically have their own meter.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's how you define it then?
Yeah.
But it, it doesn't refer to the term condo.
No, that's, that's a fair question, I think, and I think it could, it would not be a bad idea to include apartments and condos, condominiums. The definition would be the same, so if you had a single, which you probably wouldn't have in a condominium, although I.
Well, that's, that's why I asked for the condo, is because some people figure condos are apartments that you own, and then some people refer to like, some would be considered a townhouse where, you know, like what we have, we have over on, across the street from Siler Park, there's some, but some people would call condos, but they're more like townhomes in other people's opinions, so that's why I'm curious as to what the definition of condo is in this instance.
There is a reference to condominiums in the, in the, in the section, like if you go to Section B of the Water and Sewer, it talks about apartments or condominiums.
So, condominiums and apartments are treated the same in this, in this order, as a commercial property.
Right.
If, if. You know, there, there's a lot of different structure for condominiums too. I mean, you can have duplex condominiums and you have whole neighborhood of them, right? Versus you can have a single building with multiple condominiums in it. So, it kind of depends on, on, like you said, the water connection and the way that's done. So, maybe it is.
But that is a good, I mean, trustee Matt has a good point on that, that in here, it does clearly state multifamily use. As you pointed out, signs, multifamily use such as apartments or condominiums shall be defined as commercial use. It does not state the same in residential. So, if we do have a developer that wants to put in condominiums that have separate water connections for each condominium, usually you're not going to have a shared water for a condominium, regardless if they look like townhomes or houses or an apartment building that's separate. In this case, each of those connections are considered a commercial, not a residential IDOT mission in this order.
Okay, well, I probably don't want, don't need to say that condominium. I started saying this, trustee Kelly, but I actually did on a condominium before I moved here, that it didn't have shared water.
It did, okay.
So, that is possible. Not only possible, very common down in Chicago, where they converted all these old condominiums into apartments now and vice versa. So, you have shared water bills, that's why people don't really care about how much the water usage is, because they don't pay their own bill, like, their neighbors pay. I happen to have owned a condo like that.
Okay, so it is one trump.
It could be either way, and I think it's fair to say that, we should clarify, we can do this just in our, I, but when we put it on the website, one of the real things, real purposes for this is so developers, when they come to town, instead of calling us and say, how do we calculate our connection fees, you want to say, it's right on the website, you can do it right there if you need help, let them know.
Right.
So, we can make sure it's clear on the condominiums and apartments would be the same, treated the same.
Yeah, I think as a developer, if I'm looking at that, I'm going to classify as I choose my townhouse to be condominiums, because it's going to be cheaper per unit for me to do that than it would be based on this definition.
I think we would have to redefine condominium, or maybe more clearly define condominium. And I, and I would, I think, we do have a project that this is kind of important for right now, we'd like to have this considered, so with your permission, I would go back and take a look at better defining condominium, and might come back with it in a minute later. Would that satisfy your question?
Yes.
Trustee Kelly?
Yeah, I, I was just, I didn't even think about it till you brought it up, and then I saw it, it was mine, it's happened.
Oh, wait, it's all purple. Thank you, Mr. Matt, good question.
I have a follow-up question on that. So, is essentially the difference here that we're looking at as far as how we're going to build, is it based on how many meters there are?
Yes.
Is that stated in here?
Yes, what, the definite, it's really interesting, one case, if you have an apartment building that has twenty apartments in it and twenty water meters, that we build as individual units, connection fees will. If there's one meter in the building, then that building will be defined as a commercial building. That's really what we're, we're doing two things here, we're defining that building as a commercial building, which is consistent with our permitting procedures. And then the second thing we're doing is, is extending our, our chart from two inches, which is the maximum for, all the way to six inches.
I'm sorry, I just don't see where it says that residential is a single meter for a single dwelling versus the others, which is a single meter for a multi-dwelling.
I'm sorry, I'll throw it in.
I said, I think, my problem is I don't see it stated here that residential, single-family is billed because it has a single meter for a single family, and the others are a single meter, multi-dwelling.
What I meant to say was that the single meter only applies to commercial buildings. So, what we're saying here is we're defining apartment buildings as commercial buildings if they have a single meter. Does that make sense?
It does, I just don't see it stated here, that's what I'm trying to.
Yes, into that?
Yeah, it's not specifically stated in the ordinance, that's just how it's, that's just how it's defined, as a commercial building if it has a meter. It could be put in the ordinance if that's how you'd like it to be.
Where, where is it defined?
Yeah.
I don't know, I wouldn't say it's anywhere necessarily.
I think the argument is not.
Right.
I think that's for interpretation.
I think it needs to be.
Wasn't it, at the beginning of this discussion, you brought up that these were calculated based on water usage, but. I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around that. If you have one meter on an apartment building, wouldn't your water usage, a twenty-unit apartment building, wouldn't your water usage be twenty times that of a single-family home? So, why would it, why would it be a cheaper connection for the apartment building when they're using twenty tons more water?
I'll use an example of like a, like, let's say a ten-unit apartment building.
Okay.
It makes it almost impossible if you've got a two-bedroom, eight times ten, right? So, look, look at a ten-unit apartment building up at a, at two bedrooms, and you multiply by ten, right? Right from the chart, if it were considered in the residential section, versus they're going to have like a six-inch line come into that apartment building.
Okay.
And when, when it was metered like with a big six-inch meter, we had to, it was close to impossible to calculate, right? We had to wait until the meter was in and the water usage was ongoing, and then do, do meter it the first thirty days? No, because there's only, you know, two units occupied, we had to wait until ten units were occupied. And so, we're just trying to simplify getting apartment buildings, having a reasonable calculation that doesn't make it cost prohibitive to put in all those various meters.
Trustee Fuller, I think to your question, item B, I believe, defines office, commercial, industrial uses. I think that paragraph speaks to your question, it doesn't specifically say apartment buildings, but that is the definition of apartment, following.
But I think my question was, there's nothing here that says single meter.
Single what?
Single meter, there's nothing that says that here, and that was my.
It speaks to a single line as opposed to a meter, we've been using the term meter, but it's a single service line. We use the term meter and service line interchange.
So, we're ultimately incentivizing, we're making it more attractive to build apartments or that type of structure versus a single-family home by this schedule, is it, or am I missing something?
No, it is correct, that if they come in with a single line in an apartment building, they would certainly pay less than they would, we would have less meters to read, it would be less work with the village, less accounts to manage, instead of having maybe a hundred and twenty accounts, you might have six, six different buildings. But again, we get to do a survey of the surrounding communities, and that's, we want to be competitive with those surrounding communities. One of the things that this board has talked about over the years since I've been here is trying to attract nice apartments.
Yes.
And so, we wanted to be competitive in terms of our connection fees and other fees, as well as permit fees. So, there is an incentive if they come in with a single service line to each building, yes, it will cost less. The connection fee will be less, not the water.
Right.
Obviously, long-term, this is.
I just don't want to say, hey, Hampshire, all right, come on to Hampshire, build all the apartments you can build. You know, because that's, I don't think that's, that's the honest of the community.
The way that is controlled really is through zoning, we really don't have any place currently zoned for permits.
Right, right.
So, we have a lot of approvals to go through before somebody can build apartments.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Any other questions or discussion on this topic? Alright, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty-one dash seventeen, ordinance amending the regulations concerning water and sewer connections in the village and establishing new connection fees. I will make your motion. Any other questions to add to your discussion? And then we'll call the votes, please.
Mr. Coe?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Fodor?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Constine?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
What's your case here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do want to tell the board that we will take a look at this ordinance, how it is approved, and we need to come back to you and if you wish to clean up, we'll definitely consider every time you mention it. Thank you. And now, we would ask your consideration for a motion to approve an updated building permit schedule to remedy typos and reselling this category.
Josh, what's on that, please?
Sure, yeah, so there's two issues that this motion would do, I guess a little background first, is that when the village transitioned from our old building department service, BNF, to the current one, SafeBuild, SafeBuild asked it to be an official schedule, which makes sense. When we created that schedule, completely my fault, I put in a typo for some of the commercial review fees, it's off by two decimal places in several cases, as you can see, so that's being remedied. And then, the second issue is a little more complicated. BNF had a contract several years ago, I think maybe six or seven years ago, that specified how they would calculate permit fees and inspection fees. And so, when we created this fee schedule for SafeBuild, we used that contract's language. Staff realized a while later that BNF had not been using those numbers from their seven-year-old contract, you know, things updated, and there just wasn't any record of a new contract or, or new fee posting. So, this also corrects that miscalculation by, by increasing those residential, not increasing the residential fees, but showing in this posting, correct calculation that the village had been using for a few years with BNF, as opposed to the seven-year-old version. Happy to clarify that, I didn't explain it very well. You can see I highlighted in yellow on the new fee posting what the actual changes are going to be, and I'm happy to speak to any of those.
I would just say one thing, the contract is eleven years old, and we found a few things that BNF is actually not following in the contract, which is one of the reasons that we can't evolve, recommend change.
Question earlier I wanted to ask, will we be charging people the wrong amount?
No, we were charging, we were charging an amount, it's just that BNF is not charging us the proper amount, according to the contract. According to the contract, they're charging us too much, or not enough. It was just different, I would say.
It's just different.
Sometimes a little more, sometimes a little less. And when we went through the contract with the new company, actually to put a bit out, to evaluate proposals for the new company, country, company, is when we discovered that they were not billing us according to the original contract. We have been using the same billing, so we were getting our, we were marking up their bills so we made sure our costs were covered. It was only when we compared those fees to the fee structure of the new company, SafeBuild, that we realized these don't match our invoices. And so it was the contract that was not being followed. The invoicing was correct to us and to residents, or at least the same to us and residents or the developers who were the permanent tenants were. But they did not follow the contract. So in other words, there'd been a change over the years. And Lori's been here for 10, almost the entire time that BNF's here. It was never discussed. But the contract was just not being followed and nobody had looked at the contract, probably, probably 10 of them.
And I don't think the fee structure had changed. So the permit, like for a fence, has been the same ever since I've been here. So the calculation, I'm not sure if they probably maybe never followed it. I don't know.
But to that point then, that they haven't been following the contract, I know I had asked last time it was about a $25 payment to BNF. Since they're not following the contract, are we still liable to pay them any more money?
Yeah, I would, I would explain it this way. I guess at the end of the day, the village is also responsible for not enforcing, you know, enforcing the contract. It's a document that the village approved, the staff recommended, I've signed it, somebody signed it, I suppose, in the mere of time. But, so the village was never really damaged by that. It was just that the fees, some of the fees, it was really just a more complex calculated fees. The stated fees were the same. They didn't change. But some of the more complicated calculations, at some point, somebody took another, maybe a shortcut, or used a different formula. And we use the same thing because we would use the numbers from BNF and then mark them up. The reason this came up to be a little more detailed, one of the things BNF has is a billing method that really helps us. Instead of us getting a bill from BNF before and then marking it up to cover our administrative costs and make a little bit of money on those permits. BNF, SafeBuild had a billing program where they build a, they build a, the permit fee is 80% and then we get the 20% automatically. So whatever the fee structure is, the fee is X, and the village keeps 20% and SafeBuild gets their 80%. So regardless of what they invoice, we get 80%, we get 20% of that. So that was a very attractive method of billing because we didn't have to do all the calculations and we were sure regardless what our bill, what our permit fee was, we would, village would get 20%. So that's what I recommended to all of you. I believe it was in August last year. And that's the billing that we're under contract with. And it was when we did that comparison to the BNF contract that we discovered this disparity.
No commercial developer or residential developer would build the wrong thing. It's just the village may have paid too much or too little based on what the contract.
Well, to be perfectly clear on that, yes, the fee would have been different. In some cases, it might have been a little higher, it might have been a little lower. The village did not get, in other words, the contract with BNF was with the village. It was not with the contractor. It was not with the homeowner.
Right.
So the fees that the village published, and we can't publish the calculations.
But that's what I mean. Whenever we build a contractor or a developer, that was, whether it matched the contract with BNF as a third-party servicer, that was the right amount for what we charged them. They paid it, we paid that, you know.
Correct. I don't want to be too meticulous here, but I think it's important to say to your exact question, the literal answer is the amount of the permit was different in some cases than it would have been had we followed the contract.
Questions about the building permit fee schedule? As presented. And I will entertain a motion to approve an updated building permit fee schedule to remedy typos and resolve a miscalculation. Any further discussion? Can I have a roll call vote please?
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Stine?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed soon.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask Ms. Lyons to make a presentation on the preliminary monthly financial report for April 30th, 2021. Before she even begins, I want to thank Lori for all of her hard work and for Adam Terry, who's probably still sitting in the back tonight. I think everybody by now knows that the finance department has had really challenging 18 months since I've arrived. Lori has now completed three audits and began a report audit in less than a year. One audit was submitted in August and then in October and the last one just two weeks ago you approved. And now we'll be, should be telling you about the audit process coming up. Now, so we are on time with the audit with the board, with the financial office. This is actually the first monthly financial report that you've seen and will be seen every month now. This one's a little different because it's a year-end and with that, I don't know what we're handling.
So this is like Jay said, much different than you'll see moving forward, but I just kind of want to go through a few things with respect to our financial statements, especially for the new trustees, so bear with me here. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the financial report itself, but there is a cover page that kind of summarizes all the various funds that are held in supplementary pages behind it. The village has three different kinds of funds, governmental funds, proprietary funds, and fiduciary funds. Governmental funds include the general fund, special revenue funds, debt service funds, capital project funds, and permanent funds. Is everything okay?
No, her agenda is totally different than mine, so we're just trying to figure out.
We're trying to figure out.
Why did I ask? Did it get a different?
There was, yes.
Yeah, no, it's different.
It was the motion to approve the professional service agreement EEI for resourcing and due diligence.
That's F on hers, not mine.
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, that item was removed from the agenda and you had picked yours up early.
Oh.
So that's why yours is, I didn't realize that changes made. We took that, that in off the agenda.
Okay, no worries.
You were in, I think you were in early that afternoon. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I was just.
Sorry. I know, I messed up last time.
I know. Did I really flatter you? I'm sorry.
I apologize for that.
No, no, not at all. So including the governmental funds is the general fund, which is the primary operating fund of the village and it accounts for everything that essentially accounted for in another fund. Special revenue funds are another type of governmental fund. They are intended to be used for a specific purpose, like for instance, you'll hear us use the terminology motor fuel tax. That is a special revenue fund to receive from a specific source and used for a specific purpose. That's an example of that. Debt service funds are used to account for the repayment of debt and then capital project funds are used to account for construction, rehabilitation, and any type of acquisition of capital assets. Am I in the right place?
How do you?
Finally, the last type of fund in governmental funds are permanent funds. In the not-for-profit world, you often hear of these of like endowment funds. Occasionally, a government will also have a permanent fund, which is restricted to, generally, you're allowed to use the interest that's our investment income that's generated on a permanent fund and the permanent funds are permanent, not to be disturbed. And then proprietary funds include what we call enterprise funds. Those are, we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second. And then the second type of proprietary fund is an internal service fund. Enterprise funds are used to account for business-type activities. So this would be the village's water, sewer, and garbage funds. We have, we're charging either a fee for service, which would be sewage or garbage pickup, or for goods, which would be the actual water commodity if you will. And then internal service funds are used to account for activities within departments. So a good example of this, years ago, we had a reduction in our health insurance premiums. This hasn't happened recently, but years ago that did happen. And we continue to collect the same premium from our employees despite the lowering of the actual premium. We put those funds into an internal service fund and then when that turned around and the expenses went way up, we helped mitigate the giant leap in premiums for the employees by utilizing the internal service funds to refund village, basically, for those, for those services. And then finally, there are fiduciary funds. Fiduciary funds are used to account for assets held for another entity. Those would include like your pension funds and those types of things. And then I just want to go over quickly the preliminary financial report. So again, I'm not sure if you've had a chance to take a look at it, but honestly, the financials look really great. The general revenue, the general fund revenue includes the CARES Act grant fund of over $367,000. That's huge to make up the difference in losses of court fines, places for eating tax, and, and other revenues that have been down because of the COVID pandemic. I'll be happy to answer any questions about specific things, but Jay came through and asked some questions and so I thought I would include those in our highlights because if he noticed them, I imagine we probably will have the same questions. Our administrative contractual services was 25% over budget, which is a large number. Some numbers are like 100% over, but when it's such a small number, it's, you know, not a lot of dollars. This actually was a lot of dollars. And the reason for that was we had a temporary employee at the beginning of the year that was included in this. Freddie Best Professional Services for the Street State Project were included in that. We have some A5 expenses for branding in that category as well as the engineering costs for the Highland Avenue store. The years, the store's. And then in the general fund, the other large item that stands out is capital outlay. And you'll recall towards the beginning of the year, we authorized or the board authorized the purchase of a snowplow. And the snowplow came in in the fall in time for plowing. But getting the title was a big challenge. We had planned to finance this, this truck and the title finally arrived after, I think the truck was delivered in October, maybe? And the title arrived about a week before April 30th, like right as we were approving the budget. There were a whole bunch of titles evidently that got stuck down at the Secretary of State and I kept calling and calling. I had my document numbers and I finally got the right person that said, oh, you're one of the, one of the December group. And they were able to speed it up and finally got the title. So it's, that is expensed in this budget and it, or in this budget year. It was not in fiscal '21, it was not budgeted for the payments in fiscal '22 because I didn't think we were ever going to get the title. So it's my recommendation because of the, the results of the financial statements that we do not finance that truck and that we just, we paid cash in October and I suggest that it just stay that way. One of the special things in one of the special revenue funds is motor fuel tax and you've probably heard of the Rebuild Illinois Grant we have now received or as of April 30th, received three installments of that grant. There are three more coming. And the amount of each of, each of the installments was $61,000 and change.
Can I just reference that real quick?
Sure.
This is really the only Rebuild Illinois money that was distributed on the motor fuel tax formula. So other, all the other $27 billion worth of grants so far, we do expect that there may be some other, I would call this sort of revenue sharing type of revenue. So our portion was six payments of $61,000 each over three years. So it was 360, $356,000. Honey, we weren't anticipating that it will definitely come in handy, but the majority of us could pay for that interception.
And then our enterprise funds, you look, if you look especially at the garbage fund, I've either done a very poor job of budgeting or we have significant accrual adjustments that will need to be made before we run a public audit.
Or we have more garbage customs.
And we do, we do have more garbage customs.
Good revealing that we don't have a $447,000 sort of question.
As it's, as it stands right now, absolutely not. So there, there are accrual adjustments that need to be made. You'll see, well, you don't really see it in your accounts payable packet, but there's still a number of expenses that are struggling in that happens to the village. We probably will be receiving invoices from, that, you know, really belong in 2021 for several weeks beyond today's date. So, yes.
Trustee Kelly, let me just address that quickly because you and I have had this conversation with Lori in open meetings and you and I are on the same page on this. We're both familiar with the accrual-based accounting, which we do with the private sector and the public sector. It's 99% cash-based accounting, although I did learn recently that our, our water and sewer funds are accrual-based, which makes me think that the others could also be. So I'm doing some research on that. This, this report is actually kind of a hybrid because Lori has accommodated both of our questions over the, over the past 18 months. So she has attempted to make those adjustments, but they won't be official until the auditors, like the audit. I'm really struggling with the fact that village, villages like ours don't really know bottom line for their, for their fiscal year until the audit's completed in August. So it'll be three months. I couldn't run a business like that without knowing my revenue and my, and my expenses.
I'll, I'll tell you though, I don't mean to interrupt, but by the time, after we feel comfortable that we do have auditable financial statements, I can re-present this to you. Last year at this time, Jen did not speak to this when she presented the audit. However, we only had one audit adjustment. There were a total of four, three that we proposed ourselves as we were moving along and one audit adjustment, and that's one that I'm not comfortable making and that is for the change in liability, both for the police pension and IAMREF liabilities that have to be placed on the books when you roll everything up into the final financial statement. So I, I feel like we'll be able to give you a really good set of, you know, like, you'll be able to look at that number and say, I'm pretty comfortable with that, other than the change in that, those liabilities.
That'll be.
So we have audit field work the week of July, the third week in July, July 12th, maybe? Whatever that Monday is.
So Tuesday.
Is it a Tuesday?
No, same Tuesday, y'all have work. It will be a, a Tuesday.
Yeah.
But when do you expect the audit to be?
So the audit will be completed, field work will be done in July. We will have a first draft in probably mid-August and I would expect the final audit to be presented around the end of August versus September.
So four months after the end of our fiscal year. In the meantime, you'll continue to get monthly reports from us within the fiscal year.
This is kind of a bad one to start with because it's like Jay said.
I think it's a great one.
No, but it's, but it's a start.
It is.
It's a start. You know, you know, it's great.
Thank you.
Any other questions, your colleagues?
If not, Mr. Mayor, the next thing on the agenda is we would like to have a, the board have a brief discussion about the current moratorium on water shut-offs during COVID. We're not requesting any action, but we would certainly like your opinions. Staff is at a point where Lori's going to show you the numbers. We've had a substantial increase in late accounts and we would like to have the authority to start setting up water if that becomes necessary. Lori's going to tell you a little bit about what other communities are doing and then what are numbers on it.
So in my judge supplements, I, both Linda and I did a survey of additional communities in the area and what they're doing. And I believe that there's only one community other than Hampshire that is not permanently shutting, doing water disconnections because of non-payment. So our accounts receivable at April 30th are approximately three times what they were a year ago. And a year ago at April 30th, that was kind of pre-pandemic or, you know, we had started the pandemic, but the water. So our outstanding bill. So our outstanding bills were just over $30,000 three years, or in April 2021, and about $90,000 at April 30, 2020. No, sorry, 2020 versus 2021. So we just need to reach out to our residents that are behind and ask them to enter into an installment agreement to help them solve their water problem.
Do we know how many residents this town's here?
I need the council to pick up that.
Yeah, we should know exactly.
I can get you that number.
In the meantime, let me just mention one thing. As you all know, probably know, the governor did, the governor's executive order did require a mandate that COMAT and NICOR, NIGAS, they were not permitted to shut up. Municipalities were not impacted by the executive order. So it was, it was the board's consensus, statute of recommendation last year that we not do water shut-offs. But now we're getting to the point now where we, the people that watch us every day, our Water Village Clerk, Lori, and our county manager, they can see that there are certain accounts that have become delinquent, that they're probably not problem accounts, these people that know they can not pay. We do have some of those accounts that are traditionally problematic. We've been able in the past to work out payment agreements and keep them rolling. So I think this will, the first time around, will probably clean up a good half of that. And then we'll get back to the same problem accounts or new problem accounts as we head into this.
Also, it mentions in the analysis section that polling responses follow this agenda supplement. Is that what you're going to share? Like, I didn't see any polling responses included.
On the next page?
I got it.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, let me, let me put those.
I was just curious what those responses were.
I will, I can put them on the screen. I apologize. I thought that that.
That's okay.
Fire that baby up.
Let's see, what's the other community that's into water?
That's what Lori's going to show you here in a minute, I think. I just didn't know it was just.
Is this something you can verbally tell?
I don't know.
I don't recall. There, I think nine, there were nine surveys or nine responses on this thing and nine on mine. And one.
See who the other tough guys are. We did talk about this.
No, I.
I think we brought this to the board about three months ago.
Yeah, we did. To keep it going and wait, yeah. No, I was just curious if it was another, like, as an example, Genoa, is there right there? Or Bourbon or somebody close.
We don't, we don't.
I heard you say this. I read there's an ordinance that I can kick people out of here. Disrupting.
Using all your power.
See?
See? Just like that. She was going to be unruly, she wanted to get mine.
But this line, blow your poll this up, or is this it? Is this it?
Did you have to reach out far enough to like go that far to Warrenville to find somebody that had waived it and now resumed?
No, 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 no. This was actually Linda's survey, and she, we kind of mass email our groups, if you will.
I went to the Northwestern Northern Institute, which is nearby here toward the border. That people, not waiting, all over.
We didn't check any like Missouri or Alabama or Arkansas?
They don't have running water.
Warrenville's a long way away.
There's an association with clerks, and then the county district is having an association. So they, they share information like this.
I'm sorry that this wasn't included in your.
That's okay. I was just curious, so we're still one that did. Looks like Poplar Grove is still waving, I know they're waving lately.
Yep, they're shutting up. I don't believe they bill for garbage. For $250, it's not like a large bill for Village of Hampshire because garbage fees are included. Let's see. Okay, Poplar is the one that's resuming this month with shut-offs.
So they're the.
They're the ones that are.
That has the.
Correct.
And they're resuming this.
Correct.
I'm pretty sure they were waiting for us.
Morango?
Morango's, half of it's unwell accepted, so.
Morango started, restarted shut-offs in July of 2021. Ooh, I bet one.
Have we done any outreach to the residents in particular? I think commercial, but to the residents. This, is this just, first off, is this just residential or the residential authority?
It's all.
So for the residential side?
We don't.
We waived, we waived shut-offs for commercial?
Yes. I think that there's only maybe one.
I never saw that.
We have one very small commercial accounts. Nothing's in there. So how have we approached? And I just did a quick Google search, and there was recent congressional funding for COVID-19 specifically for water, for emergency assistance programs for water and wastewater service bills. And that money, $638 million plus an additional $500 million, was given to states to be used by individuals that are at 150% of the poverty line that has to pass through water and sewer bills. It is a grant program that they can then get that money to pay for that bill. Have we looked into approach or tried to work with those residents so that they can get access to those funds, if they qualify?
To be honest, that's the first time I've heard of that. I was aware that there was funding for COMAT and NIGAS. That's the first I've heard of water and sewer bills.
And I'll forward this link to you then, Mr. Mayor.
And by the way, we did start the door hangers the last time around. So we did threaten to shut off, just to make that point, and that helped a little bit. But now would be, that would be very helpful.
I think, I know that Chicago was the recipient of grant funds for that specific purpose. So I'm not sure how they're distributing that.
It said, provided for new low-income household drinking and wastewater emergencies, it's a program to be administered by the Department of Public Services and appropriated at state tribal level programs. And it's divvied out to the states as a percentage of how much of that state is eligible for money.
Filtration, we struggle.
I'm going to guess that because we're above the county.
No, no, the state got a pool of money based on the state's percentage of below the poverty line. And then the state determines how that gets divvied out. I don't know if that means an individual can apply to the state for refunding. They proved they're below that, or if it's an entire community. Like, I'm not saying us as Hampshire should go get all of this paid for because I think that'll be difficult anyway. I'm guessing the $89,000 includes trash.
Yes.
Right. And this is just water and sewer. So we'd have to look at just that portion of it. But my, the reason why I brought up that I think that's a way for a resident that may qualify to seek that additionally.
That would be great. We haven't seen any programs that do allow residents to apply except through King County. And those don't, we're not eligible because we're above the average household income in King County.
Does the resident have to apply to the program or can just the village just apply for that money on behalf of that resident?
There's no, I didn't give it to the people. I just quickly was trying to find it. I thought I had seen on the news on WGN and some of the others that there was COVID assistance. That's part of the latest act that was specific to like pass-through bills and municipal bills.
And my reason for asking is someone, I hate to make a lump everyone into the same group, like your delinquent on your bills, how, whatever you want to put into reaching out to wanting extra money to.
Well, if we spoon feed it to them, that might help.
That's why I asked.
As we, as, the more we talk about this, we could have used our COVID, our funding that we receive, our CARES Act funding for that purpose. Be sure it's not, or discuss that during the budget here. So my guess is that that would be required. If we find that Chicago chose to use their funds that way, maybe the state allocated some funding. But I would love to look into that issue.
I already, I just wanted to be, to your point on that, I don't remember us saying that we didn't want to use any of the funds specific to water. I know we did talk about the moratorium and not doing anything. I know that we talked about, is there a grant program? Because it's not just, hey, you're behind, now we're willing to do a payment. Sometimes you get so far behind, it can be the burden of that, the stress of that. You're just not going to see the light at the end of the tunnel. You're going to be buried by that debt, right? So we, I thought we had talked to some part about, do we look at a point in time that we say, you get a clean start? This fund is going to cover the backdated portion, but from this point forward, there is no.
There was, there was some discussion at the board level about forgiving some of that debt. What we, if we discussed that today, what we would like to do is have some time to work with these people and find out how much we can do without that. And if we find that there are people that really truly can't pay, at this point, we can come back to you and ask for that assistance.
Because we have another CARES funding coming, or not CARES, but anyway.
Yes, but I will, first of all, let me remind you that the CARES Act funding, you just saw that the budget was in good shape, at 99% plan for revenue because of the CARES Act funding that we used for last year's budget. So that funding is already in some.
Well, we also did transfer. So when you look at the line items, about the same amount that CARES was, we didn't transfer, that we had budgeted to transfer. So it's kind of awash a little bit.
Well.
And if we take $400,000 of the total village because of accruals in the enterprise, we're still at about a $400,000 surplus.
Because we've got spending.
So we are at a very good spot, right?
Right.
And that's why I brought up, and we now have another chunk coming, and I forget.
It's $772,000.
Correct.
And we're expecting, and the plan, as we presented during the budget, is to use that for the water connection. Now, there's nothing that's, first of all, let me just say, it wouldn't have to be CARES Act funding, it wouldn't have to be American. But, but it would, it could be any funds that you want to appropriate or budget for that purpose. There's just nothing in the current budget for that. So we would have to cut something else out of the budget or hope that it would be higher. But the entire challenge is $89,000 right now, and it typically runs about $30,000. So there's about $60,000 that we'd like to work for another month and see what we come up with. I can promise you that we have compassion here. So if we run into people that are really struggling, we'll show compassion whatever way we can. And if there's a way to, if we feel it necessary to come back and ask for some forgiveness, we can do it.
How many of these are continued delinquents?
Are, we have four residents, I believe, that we have identified that we call kind of regular late.
Oh, just four?
And they have used the system to the nth degree, if you will, in not paying. So they are significantly, significantly behind. And we're facing a lot of pressure. We're kind to our landlords as well, but they, you know, they really want to have the village force their hand, or help them force their hand on their residents, which we're really not in the position to get in the middle of tenant landlord disputes. But there, there are a lot of.
We have a few that are up by $3,000 or $4,000.
Oh, no, I don't think that there's any quite that high. There's, well, there's one, but that was a water leak situation and was working through a special plan of that one, so.
Fix a leaky toilet or running.
I would ask, I would ask that, you know, you've already stated that you have compassion. There's already, I read some of this up here that they've already, municipalities have already stated that they're going to waive leave fees. I would just, and I don't know if you want to make a policy or direction from the board, but if they're that far behind anyway due to this situation, I don't necessarily want to penalize them for being behind in this situation. You've already been waiting for leave fees.
So we.
And we'll also negotiate, I'm sorry, we'll negotiate. I mean, one reason I'm saying this, because I think my second day on the job, I encountered a person who was standing around the paint or bill, and I invited her in my office, and it was a pretty tough story. I won't go into details here, but it was a pretty tough story. We worked that arrangement. So we will do that with compassion.
Did you find the number of homes?
Hey, I apologize. It's not totaled on my report. It's just a giant list. So, I mean, I can compare the number of pages for you, but.
We can get that number for you.
I'll count them out.
We'll send it to you all. I'll email it to you tomorrow.
I have one more comment. I have been collecting water bills through this whole time. And when the students' checks are coming out, people are paying big bucks towards their water bill. They are showing the money does come in, so they are doing really well. So I gotta say, because I'm sometimes a child, like, wow. You know? And so there is, people are really behind, but they are really paying.
What is the average delinquency? I mean, you know, do we have like 100 people that are on this list? That's what we're going to count out tomorrow. I apologize. The number, it's not, it's by, my list is by account. And then like each individual, you know, person might be listed four times. So I need to just count them.
That's something that you can send us tomorrow.
Yes, I will. I just asked Lori, and I'll send it to all of you tomorrow. Lori was going to provide a little more detail today, and I asked her not to. Because we have, you know, when you, when you look at payables, I'm used to looking at 30, 60, 90 days, right? These payables are $3,000 people that moved already and probably not collecting. $4,000 of this person we don't think will ever pay. So there, it's really kind of confusing when you see the detail without really digging into the detail. But since you've all shown a lot of interest, I now should have let Lori provide the detail. Instead, we'll provide it to you tomorrow.
I would just ask that we don't get like individual level data or just like an aggregate of, you know, X number of homes and an average of X due per. I just wouldn't want my stuff lost.
Hey, you're little. Any further discussion on this topic?
No.
It's still like us to consider based on the analysis when we come back as a board, whether or not we look at a one-time forgiveness for those that, maybe it's an application to be considered for a forgiveness where they have extenuating circumstances, such as staff who prove we're not, and then we approve funds for those that are really in need. But I just ask that we think, confirm, think about something like that.
I think that's a good idea for after, for not having an analysis. And if we can get.
I agree, but I don't think we should take any money out of that, that North South connection. No money out of there. That truck stop, that well number seven is at capacity. It cannot, we cannot build much more, if anything, out there because that, that well is at capacity now. And, and I showed pictures, I'll get, I'll bring the pictures in to the new trustees. The controls for this thing are bailwired, hanging on the wall, and they got duct tape holding some of the computer stuff together.
So we just heard from Steve Zola about his plans for his property, which will be in that water tower.
So we can totally get that. I'm not saying that we drop the theater to Paul.
Just go right to this, Peter.
I'm also looking at the fact that we finance $75,000 for things to look nice now. Right? These are people's lives and water and sewer that went through rough times. When you look at prioritization, that's the kind of stuff I'm talking about. I'm not talking about killing a project.
No, I agree. What would you do? Have him submit to one of these guys that are, I think they're, you're on taxes.
Yeah, that was the question that came up the last time at the board level is how do we know if people truly have the ability to pay? We'll have to have some sort of application process and understand the financial situation.
I think they should.
It'll get, it'll get pretty personal, but if we start.
Well.
Submit, submit your tax return.
I think, I think my thought would be to come up with a plan at the staff level, send us the information, come up with some options for a plan at the staff level. And then we can visit this topic every, every meeting or at least once a month until we have the right solution. I mean, that doesn't, the trustee Kelly's points, these people's livelihoods, people's lives we're messing with. So we got to talk about it every, every meeting for the next six months. And that's me personally. I don't know about you guys.
We can talk about it, but at some point in time, you got to come up with a accounting method.
Right.
To go with. And we got, we can beat the horse till it's dead, but at the end of the day, end of the year, income tax return, what you filed to Uncle Sam, show it to.
Other communities got to use that. Other, other communities are dealing with this too. So maybe you guys could reach out to your groups again and find out how they're dealing. Maybe we can reach out through Metro West.
I was just asking Josh, because it just clicked in my mind. We actually did that. We have prepared an application and qualifications for how we would administer a program based on need. So we, we, we are, we have the ability to do that. Uh, but I, I do want to respect, um, Lori's opinion and give us, give us a month or two.
Yeah.
To see who can pay. Uh, because as soon as the word gets out that we have to give this program to have a little larger children.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I remember seeing, I think it was, it might have been Pingu out there. I know, but I think it said that they had.
I don't think we have.
Yeah.
They, they did have, I remember reading about it on Facebook.
Balances were crazy big, payment plans were horrible to manage. So.
They are difficult to manage.
They're having a tough time.
But, but we, we get through that.
Yeah, okay.
We'll have a lot more to tell you about. And we'll tell you more tomorrow about the, the number of people and so.
Are we, we're going to extend the moratorium another month then? Is that what I'm understanding, or are we going to start the water shut offs?
So I think what we should do is start hanging door hangers to get people's attention. Um, and it, um, asks them to come to village hall to make a payment.
We would like, first of all, let me just say, the board did not vote on the moratorium to begin with. We had a conversation like this, and then staff just did not do shut offs. We would like, we would like your agreement today to start doing that again, uh, with good judgment and discretion. Otherwise, we're going to wait another month. If you would prefer to wait two weeks, we could.
No, that's why, that's why I was asking for clarification, just so that everybody in the room understood what we were doing at the end of this conversation. So we are, just so that I understand, we're, we're at a support. We're authorizing staff to allow them to start the door hangers and the shut offs and stuff, and then start negotiating.
That's shut offs.
Not shut offs.
Okay, so there's not a consensus that you want to allow shut offs at this point?
That, that's what I'm asking.
So no change for today, and we'll send you a report tomorrow, and then we'll come back and ask you again in two weeks.
That was only three of us that just.
I heard a lot of voices.
So my understanding was, yes, door hangers, yes, gather data, and then come back and discuss this in two weeks.
Yes.
Is that sort of consensus?
Yeah. That's not what we're asking for, but that's what they're asking us, so that's what we'll be happy to do.
And then that, that's, as long, is everybody good with that?
Hang on, hang on, hang on. What are you asking, yeah, what are you asking for?
What we're asking for is the authority to begin shut offs again.
That was not proper. At our meeting that we, when we talked about this, uh, uh, m- 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 moratorium on this, we all agreed then that we were going to, before shut offs began, we were going to restart a process of notification, you got to get your bill paid or you're going to get shut off.
Oh, we will do that.
Well, yeah, but you just said shut offs.
We want the authority to do it when that comes, but, and, and just to make the plan, and again, we just agreed, obviously, we will do what the board asks. We will be the only community in those surveyed that will still, still not be doing shut offs. So, and that's fine, we're compassionate community.
I could, in my right mind, uh, allow shut offs without giving them ample, uh, door hangers, flyers, warnings.
Do all that before they shut off. If, if none of those steps are, are successful, or they're not seeing any progress, then I think they're going to resort to shut off.
And, and if we, sorry to interrupt, and if we don't think that, see, that there's a real need, you know, compassion is a prob, a problem that deserves compassion. So only in the, in the arbitrary cases, in the cases where we think shut off is appropriate, will we do that.
How long is it, so when you put a door tag on a door, what's the timeline for shut offs? So if you get a tag on your door, if you don't go to the village hall and do, what is it?
We give them five days to, to make their payment, or to come to the village hall to make a payment or anything.
And these are pre-printed door tags, so it's not like something that you can say.
They, all we do is stamp the date on there.
Okay, so these people that are going through, some of them, some real financial toil, are going to get that notice, and they're going to come in here lathered up like a cougar.
Well, they've already been getting the notice.
And.
Yeah, they, they have been receiving regular bills, and then late notices if they fail.
Right, but now they're going to actually get a, a separate door hanger. So they're going to come in to the two front curls that are lathered up. Is there going to be somebody here that's going to be prepared to take over when somebody's irate?
We've always done that.
Okay.
Lori's done it, I've done it myself. If Linda helps.
The problem that.
But if, if, I, I don't believe we've given the board enough information tonight, so I think we should provide the information tomorrow that we've discussed, uh, and then we'll come back to you in two weeks.
Respectfully, I, I, I would feel better moving forward with shut offs if we had some kind of path to resolution, like some kind of plan, place. And I, I'm, I, I agree with you, ninety thousand dollars is a lot of money. Okay, I get that part, that as far as budget, it's a lot of money, and we've gone a long time. But I'm kind of with Toby to the fact that we talked about this once back then, and I thought we were going to come up with a plan for, like, uh, this is what we're going to do, like a forgiveness application, or whatever the heck we called it back then. And, and we haven't done that, and now we're wanting to start shutting out water, and we have no. Other than the fact that you're assuring us that it's going to be compassionate, which I know it will be, we don't have anything that, when this stuff blows up and community members come in here, we're not, we don't have any plan in place, or a piece of paper we can give them to say, look, we're working. Or look, this is your path out of this, or here, we're here to help you, we don't have that, other than what we've already done. All right, so can we talk about this again in two weeks?
Yes, we can absolutely do that.
Even just like as a good fake payment, you know, when they come in, I mean, I like the idea of the door hangers, if they come in and talk to us about it, because right now we, you know, no communication. And, and at that point then, you're asking for a good fake something, you know, if they're able to put twenty dollars down, you know, that's all they can afford, at least it shows something and that there's some communications, so.
And that's, that's what we've always done, we, um, the village has always done that, and we've really had very few cases that got really difficult. And I just, I think there's a fair number of people out there who probably could pay, but they're using COVID and, and not paying, having utilities and other things that were forgiven. Uh, but I, the board, you deserve more information, so I think rather than just sending you your numbers tomorrow, we'll come back in two weeks with a report.
Can everybody come in with that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, um, we are now, uh, where we normally go to the finance meeting, but we don't have one, so now we will.
Well, we technically still do, but.
Yeah.
You certainly know now.
And as far as we would ask for a motion to approve the May twenty, it's twenty twenty-one accounts payable to personnel. And Lori will be happy to answer any questions we have.
What was the difference between what came in the PACA?
Um, so the crude free distribution of twenty-nine thousand dollars was requested and, uh, uh, omitted from the original, um, listing, so that's been added.
The first motion that is being requested is for the personnel payment of a hundred and thirty dollars. So, um, they changed some law a little while back, that they have to be separated out. So for anybody that's, like, by the village or has an official position or something like that, we have to do it. Just for. That's why. So, so they, they changed, they changed the regulation not long ago, where any type of reimbursements have to be done on their own.
This will be done, this, this is everyone.
Yeah, so.
So they'll have a reimbursement.
You get a four and then a scary number.
Yeah.
Hey, this is a scary number.
I just thought I'd give you a little context.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'll make a motion for a reimbursement.
Second, any questions or comments? Can I roll the call over to you?
Mr. Keller. Ms. Boulder.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
All right.
Ms. Paul Spingin.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Hope.
Hi.
Okay, six zero.
Thank you, we'd ask for a motion to approve the May twenty, twenty, twenty-one regular account payable.
I'll take a motion for the May twenty, twenty-one, May twenty, twenty, twenty-one regular accounts payable.
Questions or questions?
Well, okay, so would you like, would you like that discussion about it first, or would you like to entertain a motion to approve it and then have questions as I ask? What do you think?
Oh, oh.
Big one, right? No, no, I'm being, no, I'm being serious.
I, I have a question.
All right, then let's, let's, let's go with the questions.
Page one. Beans Farm, four hundred ninety dollars for mulch.
Um, it was, looks like it was done in the water department. Um, I forget it specifically.
I, I, I get quadrupled that amount for less than half that price of central tree.
Beans is twenty-five dollars.
Premium stuff.
I didn't see them all.
Yeah, I wish I seen it.
Well, the invoice is cut off. It looks like sixty-two dollars per whatever.
Yard.
Okay. It's a quality, quality blend, it says.
Beans blend?
So we don't know what it was for.
It was you, it was an expense of the.
It's not expensive, mostly made in.
Water department, that's all I know.
We can look into that, we're just supposed to be like, know the details.
Oh, sure, yeah, that's sixty-two dollars a yard.
Where did they put it?
Yeah, I don't.
That's what, I'll have to look into that.
Okay, Mar-a-Lago.
Uh, page three and four. So we've, we've got the dispersal transition fee to the school district, which I completely understand. And then we have dispersal of the interest, which is on that fund.
Correct.
They're the only transition fee that also includes dispersal of interest.
Yes, they sent a letter, um, they, they're working on projects, I believe, for the summer, and they sent a letter requesting all of their funds specifically, the interest as well. So their fund, like, um, I think we have one new home permit since this, uh, total was calculated. This, uh, gets rid of all the money through in the impact transition account held for the school.
Is there a reason we don't just include automatically the interest sitting in the transition fee fund for, like, Ella Johnson or the park district or any of the other projects? Or do you pay that on the transition fee?
Um, on a monthly basis, it's going to be just a few cents. Um, and I think, uh, transition fees are for operating purposes, and the interest in this account has built up, um, also on impact fees, so we've treated it as an impact fee. If they want it, they need to request it for a specific capital project.
Interest on the transition fee is being treated as an impact fee?
It, it's on impact and transition fees. In this case, that was residual money from back when they had, you know, like, eighty thousand dollars, only twenty dollars of interest. Um, but, uh, other, other, so we're not collecting currently any impact fees for the school district because of land contributions and blew up that. So in, in this case, um, it's only on transition fees. For, for the other organizations, there are impact and transition fees included in the interest calculation. And so it's, I mean, I could change that, but it's always been treated as, if you, if you want your interest, you request it.
Okay, and that's in the intergovernmental agreements for impact and transition fees, that the interest will be treated as an impact.
No, it's not. That's, that's just the practice that's been done.
Any other questions or discussion on accounts bill?
Yes, page two, um, vendor is Katie. Card member service, just up in the bottom, a four in transition fee of forty-four dollars. Any idea?
I could check that.
Okay.
I, I just wanted just to say something generally, and I keep saying the new people, the new people. It's going to take us a little time, me a little time then, to kind of get used to the size of the bills. Um, and I'm understanding now that some of those fees are twice a year, some of them are at certain times of the year. So I'm kind of trying to, to break that down. Um, specifically then, let me just go to page five, um, the engineering enterprises. And I know it's like, it's a seventy-five thousand dollar bill, and it's a ton of projects. And so my question is, is this from several months' worth, or this is just from the last thirty days? Um, is this a regular bill that you get monthly for seventy-five thousand?
Um, so it varies every month, obviously. It has the risk and resilience, um, report that they're doing for our water system.
Okay.
Um, and that's a fifty-three thousand dollar bill that belongs to the village. Many of these, many of these other projects are billed to the project itself.
Okay.
Um, and then reimbursed to us. So we pay the EEI for their review, and then we bill back the developer for those fees. Um, so this, this is one month's worth of fees.
Okay, I actually, it's street states in there, that's fifty-three thousand dollars.
I was going to say, it's streetscape.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, I.
No, no, that's, that is in there, and so, so I understand, I'm like, okay, so that, that is a big one, but this is just typical, and, um, you know, some of the bills are one forty-one and four hundreds.
They bill us every month for all the projects in the community.
Everything that they do.
And I, I have a spreadsheet of all the projects here today, what, not just here as a project, whether it be three or four years. We keep track of all the projects, what it costs, we can refer back. And EEI does a reported hour request.
Okay.
Doing that since.
Okay.
So before I ask, she asked about.
Yep.
Or transfer fee.
So I, um, it's related to the fixed software that was purchased by the utility department to monitor their, um, uh, maintenance, uh, it's one of the, uh, enhancements that we talk about efficiencies as far as scheduling people how to do maintenance on various, uh, facilities within the water and wastewater treatment system.
It's a work ticket program for employees, it gives them assignments, it also keeps track of maintenance on.
I'm not sure about Florence, it does say Florence transaction fee, which is really odd.
So I wonder where they have purchased the software.
Yeah, it's, it's an online program for sure.
Um, but was it designed in a.
I thought that we would actually prepaid this, so I'll, I'll look into that a little more too.
Did I miss?
These are great questions.
Did I miss?
I was mistaken, I.
I guess this is multiple pages, like the school district, fire department, park district. It says their transition fee, they're looking at impact fees.
No, they're transition fees. School is transition.
Cause that's the.
Yes.
That's the big one, the once a year big one that we do?
Um.
For all three.
So we actually have a couple months' worth of, uh, transition fees collected and being distributed all in this month. Um, but yeah, but we, we can do this frequently as well.
I just have a question on back to the engineering enterprises. Are anywhere in their building, are they the, uh, ones that are inspecting all the sewer work and stuff going on out off of Harmony Road, that, uh, ground project?
Yes.
There. Okay. I don't, because I don't see it in here.
There's a line item for Crown East.
Baby. Six hundred fifty bucks. Six forty-eight fifty. That's extremely cheap to have an engineer out there inspecting the sewer pipes, sewer hookups, backfillings, mortar manholes, all that kind of stuff.
Jerry, if I could answer a quick question, that's. It's, uh, the one that's, that you have labeled as Oakstead, AJ, it's number eleven. That is the school district, uh, project, and then the twelve is the larger Crown development, which we did review for previously, that's not under construction, so that number eleven, Oakstead, is the school district.
Are you guys doing the inspections on Harmony Road on the Crown Project off of Harmony Road by the cemetery?
Uh, we will be, they've not, they're just in the beginning phase of, um, so that is number two, actually.
A while.
But so, you have to understand.
A long time.
There's several survey crews out there, there's like about four or five pickup trucks and groups of people. They just pulled a permit for a large piece of equipment to end up on the site within the next few days. But I don't think there's any excavating, they're just surveying, from what I can tell, and I see them every day.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll be getting, beginning shortly, uh, with the, uh, underground improvements out there.
It's not, it's one thing that trustee Paul Strain and I were just talking about, we're talking about the EEI. I don't know that part of this that you don't see here, is that, for instance, Crown today, that's a pass through, we pay it, but that.
Correct.
That industry, that developer, that business is, is reimbursing that. She had a good point, we don't see the income part of, of it, we just see the outgoing funds. We don't really get an income statement, so that, I mean, we're just, you would know that this is an actual offset of something.
So we treat those as, um, the deposits that the developers put. So we treat those as, um, the deposits that the developers put down as liabilities and then we charge against the liabilities. And we're in the process of sending out statements to these developers to, um, you know, monitor what they either owe us or we still owe them.
So we, we can, we can provide you with more information if you'd like that, like to understand a little better how you'd like that presented. Uh, if you'd like to have a report periodically that says, here's the, uh, the Penn Ag project, here's how much they can build, here's how much E E I has billed us. Provide that by project. Uh, or we could indicate on, I think we could indicate on the payables, whether it's reimbursable.
Um, yeah, generally if it starts in zero one, um, with lots of zeros in the middle, that is something that's billed to the developer versus, um.
Sure, anyway, that you could make that a little clearer to understand.
So.
I mean, I like zeros.
So the very first one is, is reimbursable by love, it's zero one and then six zeros in the middle.
With the account number.
Yes, and then two zero seven two at the very end.
Okay.
Um, those would be indicative of something that's reimbursable to the village. Versus like if you go down to the ones, uh, the connecting, connection of the water and south water system. That is, starts with a thirty, that's a water fund, um, account. Um, and then that's, uh, an engineering expense for.
Yeah, but to your point, if it's zero one or lots of zeros, assume that that business is. So to your question, Mr. Hedges, I think, and we talked about this a year ago, a year and a half ago, and I know you had, you had started and then it kind of shifted maybe right when I had started. You talked about having either quarterly or monthly, uh, a financial statement that showed receivables, expenditures, cash on hand.
How much actual?
Just for engineering.
No, for total village, not by line items, not, not by fund, just total for the village. We had seven hundred and fifty thousand in receivers, six hundred and eighty-six thousand in expenditures, cash on hand and tax.
And I think, didn't we back off on that till the audits were all caught up?
That's what I'm saying, that was a while ago and that, that was kind of, but to your point, it was like more level, I think at macro level is, we're, it's, we'd have to start there before we worry about getting down to.
Well, that'd be a period.
It probably won't be in our monthly reports, but maybe quarterly we can put together a balance sheet. Um, keep in mind that every fund that you looked at, so each of those little blocks has its own balance sheet. So.
It has its own bank account.
Uh, no, it doesn't have its own bank account necessarily. Uh, cause it could be pooled cash, but it does have its own balance sheet.
It's not a day cover expenses, that's not just balance sheet, that's what, expenses. Help me understand where you're at, what you.
He wants assets and liabilities with a balance sheet.
Uh, yeah, but not capital liability, so I, what I'm talking about is even more simple than that.
Receivables and payables.
Receivables and payables, here's cash on hand, the village has.
Uh, so, yes, um, I, this is a process, right? Um, and this was not really the one to, to give you the cash on hand and the divvy.
Totally get that, and I'm not saying.
Yes, I will get that.
To trustee, I was trying before, there's a lot going on, I remember like this isn't a priority, but there was also, I know, a lot of discussion around, we're just wanting visibility into what's the, the liquid health of the village.
Got you, yep, yep.
Otherwise I'd be scared to approve. The bill's at the end of the month going, is that going to leave us anything it left for next month, so.
Well, let me, uh, we, we talked about this during the budget, it's maybe not such a divorce, but see, though, we do have right now three months of reserve on hand, generally. That's the first time we've been able to calculate that, we provided that too during the budget. We, we've made that up, but it's, we can include that in financial.
And if, and if you, if you're wondering like a scale, we're trustees, the state sets like what they call unbalanced percentage goals of what they consider to be a healthy fund. Last I had ever seen something, it was twenty percent.
Really about, about three months' worth of.
Yeah, it's considered a healthy fund balance, right? You're never going to be at fifty or a hundred percent, cause then you're not spending on what that fund has done.
And that same state has about a negative three months, actually maybe negative ten years.
Yeah. But yeah, so that's like when you're, when you hear three months and you're like, really? It's actually not bad.
That's actually, that's actually good.
Yeah.
I have three more questions.
Sure.
Like, I'm sorry, um, on page eight, we have a refreshment for the tree program, I'm just curious, how many trees is six hundred dollars?
So, um, you can receive up to one hundred and fifty dollars per tree.
So this would be.
Yes.
Okay, up to.
Yes, so it's fifty percent up to one hundred and fifty dollars, you can have a five hundred dollar tree and only get reimbursed, um, up to one fifty.
Okay, um, on the next line, I think there's just a typo, I, I believe this will speak annual. Or students?
Yes.
Okay, just a tiny little thing, see, they'll do it easy. Okay, and then on page ten, our website hosting, how often do we pay one hundred and fifty-five dollars?
Every month.
So there's a reason for that. We've gotten into it before, there's no reason to. So we contract with a company called Municipal Web Services and then CMS manager for our website, but included with that are other services like. And we, um, they also back up our website and spoil lines and all that stuff. So, um, trustee Kelly had asked that question, not to run, but because there's a lot of other website for what. And yeah, just for web hosting, I, I would agree with you, it's, it's a lot of money, but for the services that we get for that, it's, it's a, it's a fairly decent price. Now you'll notice in the coming months, I'm sure the bill will differ because we all, there's also a certain level of support that comes with it. And then there's certain levels of support that we have to pay for when we ask different types of questions and that kind of stuff. And then the biggest reason that we, yeah, UniWeb versus like, uh, Wix or like another one that's more inexpensive is because that's what they do. They're municipal web service and they support us and it's one phone number, time and we contracted, um, not picking Linda up. But she was the only lady that was maintaining the website and so it was Linda and myself, and so when you had the changes and stuff that we were doing and the different modules and stuff that we needed for agenda, minute management and that kind of stuff. That's why we're with them. So I mean, it's, it's, a lot of people that are in the business are going to go, oh my God, you're paying one hundred and fifty dollars a month, there's more to it than just they're hosting our website. But you, you've given it, done it now.
Well, I'm assuming all those other services, if we had to hire in-house, would cost us substantially more.
Right, and, and it's not like we don't pay for the additional things, like if we need banners redesigned and stuff. But our website's designed in a way that certain people only have access to certain things. And so that this way you can't like delete the whole site, you can't change headers and that kind of thing. So I mean, it's, it's very user-friendly, so it's one of the reasons that we have that one, some of the. Did I describe that correctly? Cause you and I've gotten into.
You can absolutely describe your viewpoint on.
Hey, you can take over anytime. You want to do the website damage.
I think I made a statement in the last meeting about getting on the paid day operation.
So I'm trying really hard. But someone had to go to camp, so he can't take over.
Before we go forward, I do have the answer to the, um, the foreign transaction fee. The fixed software is also on the credit card bill and, um, when I looked, uh, we're actually paying eighty dollars to Toronto, Ontario, Canada. So there was a twenty-four dollar additional fee for the summer.
Let's just get a shake.
You have a doubt?
Shake your sweet money.
Sorry, could you say the city again?
Excuse me?
Did you say the city in Canada again?
Toronto?
Toronto, Ontario?
Incorrect pronunciation.
No, it's correct for everybody who doesn't live there.
Wait, you're a French teacher.
You just don't pronounce it very much, John.
Uh, Toronto.
It's just a soft T for something, I don't know why. It was weird.
You know, like.
Kind of like Louisville.
Like Toronto bread.
Louisville. I got my.
Yes, yeah.
Like there's an S at the end of jewel.
So it's a Canadian for.
Can I entertain a motion to pay the house bail on that?
The loop. No matter.
So now you guys have talked, uh, you guys have seen the appointments that we have and. Oh, sorry. Can I roll bubble please for saying?
Mr. Carter. Hi.
No, I'm not.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Street.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Say again? Jay's gonna email us all tomorrow.
What was the question?
Beans, I'm still curious about Beans Farm.
I've got it on my list. Hundred dollars worth of mulch.
Sixty.
Better, better not have gone to trustee Robinson's house.
So, well, you would know if I had sixty-five dollar mulch. Didn't even sell sixty-five dollar mulch.
Okay, I, I do have some additional. I'll sign him on just sixty-five bucks. So there was, um, it wasn't a hundred percent mulch, so a hundred and twenty-five dollars was for pulverized topsoil.
Okay.
To do the shoulder in the parking lot. Um, and then there was another hundred and twenty-five dollar, so two fifty for.
But those are on separate lines.
Oh, are they?
Yeah. That's on the next page. The shoulders, the shoulders.
So four, what, four six, four ninety?
Four ninety was for mulch.
Yeah.
And you got two shoulders for.
It's the four ninety and the mulch that you think is.
It's crazy.
Yeah, I'd like, yes, I would like. Thank you, sir. Can I, uh, can I move on on the agenda? Is that okay? All right, so you guys, see, you guys were all included in the pack and I hope this Excel spreadsheet looking thing that, uh, establishes new committees. Uh, and, and so basically we had a bunch of committees before that really didn't serve any purpose to us anymore. They did at a time and they don't really serve some purpose, so my thought was to, um, change the name of the finance committee to the budget committee. Because that would only be to have, uh, jurisdiction over budget process. Uh, we needed, now also, if there ever is a need to have a separate committee or an app committee or committee of the whole or something, that's something that we can do. And we also have the ability to establish a committee at any time for any reason. So, but these are just standing committees that didn't really serve a whole lot of purpose. So my, I, I would entertain a motion and we're going to have to, on our next agenda, we left out the planning and zoning committee. We're going to have to dissolve that, but we can't dissolve it whether or not on the agenda, we did last.
Yeah, we did, didn't we?
No, it was the planning and zoning commission. We did that by Mr. Rock. Right, so we did planning, we dissolved the planning commission, we dissolved the zoning board appeals. I'm talking about the planning and zoning committee that Eric, Mr. Robinson chairs at the current time. So we need to dissolve that. It's just something I didn't see. So I, I, I entertain a motion to dissolve the finance committee, the fields and trails committee and the village services committee at this time. Um, the first, that would be the first step to the next thing where we would establish the new stadium.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Why are we getting rid of fields?
I know, I just.
It's just an ongoing job, that's where I'll check.
Right, um.
She, she wanted to chair that trail.
If you want to be the liaison to the trail.
Big transition meeting between you and trustee Pajeki. Give you the minutes.
Yeah, no, I, I, trustee, nobody can fill his shoes. He left his eight thousand dollars.
One yard.
So I have a first and a second. Do we have any other, do we have any other comments or do I need to send to the principal office? All right, I'm.
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Carter.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Street.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
We should pass six zero.
So along with the, uh, with the public works committee that's sticking around, the public relations committee and the liquor commission. I am going to make, I would like to entertain a motion to establish a budget, budget committee as a standing committee of the village board. Okay?
Okay. Second.
Questions or comments? Can I roll bubble please?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Street.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Carter.
Hi.
We should pass six zero.
Now, this is just, uh, something I have to say to make the appointments official. I, village president hereby appoint, this Laura Paul Street, as chair, Eric Robinson and Toby Coles to the budget committee for two-year terms, there's no action needed. Uh, the next line would be, I do hereby appoint trustee Toby Coles and trustee Kelly and trustee Robinson to the public works committee for two-year term. I, village president, appoint trustee Carter, trustee Matt and trustee Kelly to the public relations committee, trustee Carter will be the chair. And I, as village president, hereby appoint trustee Matt and trustee Coles to the village's liquor control commission. Again, there's no action required, I just need to read those, those are your appointments. And again, if the, if we go through this, I, I am not opposed to this being a fluid process. If we find that these committees aren't effective in the roles that we thought that they would be, we can change them, we can, I, I am okay with establishing new committees if we find that there's a need somewhere else. Um, but having offense to trustee Pajeki, uh, the fields and trail committee didn't really serve the purpose. And like we had a planning and zoning committee, if we still have it, we will dissolve it at the next meeting. Ended up finding jobs for committees to do and that's not where we needed to be. So that's, that was what I wanted to hear. So now that you are now all appointed to your committees, let's start with some reports.
Trustee Coles, you're up. Public Works, new sweeper. If, if, if the trustees are, are encouraged to go over, if it's there.
My four-year-old son says it's off.
Don't cut it off, don't cut it off in the street to take a look at it, you know, if you're car. But, uh, the difference is beyond belief.
It's in use now.
It's in use now. Uh, the old, the old one to put a glumier shop back at home would be better.
Yeah.
Uh, this thing has double sucking capacity, it's got interior washing capacity, so you don't have to get in there and, I mean, it's, it's unbelievable.
A nice brush, my son said.
Yes.
I'm not kidding, he was over at the public works building last night looking at it for twenty minutes and he didn't see the old one back there and he's still wiring.
I will say that the, the, uh, the little combination of back holes is down again, is that right? Cylinder.
Which one is?
Uh, the combination back hole, that thing's been torn apart more than a doctor's operating.
The one that they just paid like ping green to fix or something like that?
Uh, I think it was a lot more than that, it was like twenty-five.
Oh, that's right, what's that?
But public works is going to be able to fix it. And what I, what I want, what I'm asking our village manager to do is go to your public works director. And I ask him to give a spreadsheet, cause I want this board to see it. The amount of money, if a machine breaks down and they got to low boy it and send it out to, you know, Jimmy's Repair Shop versus in-house. You guys are going to be astounded at the hundreds of thousands of dollars these guys saved the village. They've got young kids that are good welders, good mechanics, good leaders, um, but yeah, that sweeper's pretty cool.
Yeah, our streets department really does a great job of in-house maintenance, uh, and, and big time maintenance, not just routine maintenance, it takes us a lot of.
That's all for public works.
Public relations.
Sweeper came by my house, I didn't know it was a new one.
I threw a whole can of nails out, see if it'd pick it up.
Right in front of your driveway. Is that why your tires were off then, when I came in late?
Are we going to see you in the upcoming table? Just saying. Frigging tires. Reimbursed. Just sorry.
No report at this time, shopping.
How's our budget looking, Ms. Paul Street?
You know, it's fantastic, um, no further report than what's been doing already today.
Mr. Kelly, you're up.
B D C, the B D C met last week, uh, it was my first B D C meeting. I have to say that, uh, I was honored to be amongst some of the really great dedicated individuals and business leaders in the community. And the collaboration and the discussion they have, it was, it was a really cool experience, so honored to be a part of that. Um, a couple of things that were discussed, just to, to bring the board up. We're talking about an ambassador program, the, the B D C's talking about ambassador program, identifying CEO or C-level leaders of Hampshire businesses to be a one-to-one reference of the new business looks to come. to be a one-to-one reference of the new business looks to come in. So if a new manufacturer is looking at, or the, uh, presentation earlier, new transportation company is looking to develop, they can, they can meet with, without the village being involved, a C-level executive for a transportation company in the village to understand what's it like to have, have a business within the village, how does it work here, what's the community like, things like that. So there, there, the next steps are really working, um, with the chamber to identify who those businesses are uh, and the leadership within those businesses to start to build that initial list and that program. The second thing we discussed was commercial land development. Commercial land development was really more of a discussion topic. It was, if you were to think about what the ideal version of Hampshire was to look like in twenty to thirty years, what are the things that must be there? And, and there was one thing, and it deals with fields and trails that was really interesting. We talked about the fact that Hampshire has kind of been developed into islands. You have Lakewood, you have Crown, you've got Tuscany, you have the downtown. And there was a discussion of years and years down the road, having a bike trail or path that connected these outskirts developments that people could ride to help bring business to the downtown area on a Saturday afternoon, similar to what you see in Geneva, Charles and some of them. So it was interesting things that deals with trails. Uh, and then there was opposite questions, what should Hampshire absolutely not have service to the, uh, things? And I, I will say in general, the things that should be there, a lot of people were talking about family-friendly, family-focused type businesses, small businesses, artisan craft type businesses. Uh, the things not, or the adult industry businesses were, I think, what the group had identified. Uh, we also talked about, so chairman Kojaki, almost said trustee and I had to pause for a minute. Chairman Kojaki and I are going to start, uh, a subset, uh, investigation into incubators and entrepreneurship programs within the village. And we've identified that the Economic Development Agency with the federal government gives out millions of dollars in grants even this year to date for communities, for cities, counties, uh, and businesses to start incubator programs for small businesses, for future innovation. So we're gonna start looking into the possibility of doing that, identifying spaces within the town that partner with local universities and see how can we really start driving that. Uh, we talked about facade program, there was a topic made, I, this is just a general topic because there was a business talked about potentially wanting to apply for it for one of the, the locations, and the topic that came up was anyone who's applying to the facade program, there should be an intended use for that building or an intended use for that facility. And if there's no intended use, the facade program shouldn't be used just to bring something up to code. That's not the intent of a facade program, it's to improve whatever that business is that's going in there. So for example, Copper Barrel, here is a business that wants to open up and to do that, they wanted to improve the facade of the program so they get the grant. For the newer trustees that may not know what that program is, we budget seventy-five thousand a year. Businesses in a defined geographic area, which you think kind of like circle around State Street downtown area can apply and it goes towards facade improvements, physical improvements, and in some cases towards infrastructure improvements like actual beams. I think past it, we actually get some internal, like structural improvements.
They did everything.
No, but that was through tip funds, as I recall.
No, that was facade.
That was facade, that was facade.
Yep, and so.
They didn't get any tip funds for that?
No, not any reason.
So, uh, it's a great program, but the, the discussion was it's not a program to offset somebody that needs to get.
And it's a matching program.
And it's a matching.
We pay from fifty to seventy-five percent.
Correct. Up to a total budget for the year of seventy-five thousand. So the other thing the BBC does when they consider these and then bring the, the application to the village board is how much budget is left and how do we ensure we try to give out funds to enough businesses to drive equity? It did come up as a part of that discussion, the building across the street from here. Uh, or across the street from the Copper Barrel and, uh, the enforcement of ordinances and code violations. Uh, Mr. Edges was on there and, and had said that, that we're working with, and I believe it was Mr. Swalwell that said they're working with the owners to find a remedy to bring it to code as soon as, soon.
Chris.
Uh, so that we don't have things like insulation problems.
Speaking of dollars, former dollars.
Correct, okay.
That also has been brought, but they paid it yet there.
Uh, and then the other thing that I'll update is Hampshire's very own, which is like a monthly highlight of a business within the community. The schedule was confirmed through October. The May one will focus on the Hampshire Animal Hospital and, uh, Jeannie, the chair or executive director of the chamber is the one that writes those. I don't have when the next meeting is. Mr. Edges, do you remember? I don't know that we set one and I texted you this.
So it's the second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday will be the next one.
It would be, uh, the ninth.
Or June. If that changes.
At six thirty. In the PM, right here.
There you go. And I end my report, that's all I got to say.
All right, new business or other announcements?
Um, since we do still have a planning and zoning committee.
Who signed your committee now?
It's, it's.
Eric signed it with you and Brian.
Brian.
Yes, it's just you?
I have all the power now.
So sorry, trustee Robinson, but you are a core by yourself, so you catch up.
There is a, uh, planning and zoning commission meeting on Monday, the twenty-fourth, and they were going to, you guys are gonna discuss what Mr. Gazzolo was presenting about earlier. But I did have a question about this meeting, the second item that will be discussed, maybe Mr. Schuster, Kelly, is, um, you're gonna discuss off-street parking in M1, M2, and M3 industrial districts. And my question is, what Mr. Gazzolo is planning to do is looking for M2 zoning. However, I'm concerned that opening up off-street parking would then include like his property. I, I, is this a, is this a discussion for a specific property? Or is it a discussion for the entire zoning?
If I could speak to that, please. And actually, I'm gonna let Josh speak in specifics, because this has come up now three times just in the last four months. Um, it came up first with Pet Ag, when they bought, they bought, I'm sorry, uh, WR, about the former Pet Ag building. And then they.
Right over here.
Yeah.
Really?
And then they wanted to.
Sorry, right over here on Kite.
No, it's a little further over on Industrial.
Oh, okay.
All the way back.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Um, a lot of people didn't realize, I think, that that was really Pet Ag's biggest building back then. Uh, but we found three, in three occasions now where our, our ordinances are really restricted on front, front yard parking in industrial areas, which is very uncommon. We checked with safety buildings, our building department, and they said they've really never seen an ordinance that is that restricted. So Josh, you might tell a little bit more about it, is that?
Sure, well, I guess all I would add is that I checked out, I think, uh, eight other communities in the nearby region. And Hampshire is the only community that does not allow parking in the front yards of these industrial, uh, properties. So it's not like public parking, I don't know if that's maybe what you're speaking about. It's just the company is allowed to have parking in front of their buildings now, between the building and the street. So the recommendation for the amendments to the code is that they can do so now, as long as it's at least fifteen feet off the road.
And this would be built like.
So plus, so I guess front, front yard and side yard parking is not an actual, they're not parking on a yard on a, on a.
No, it's a segment.
Yeah, it's a parking lot.
Yeah, okay. Their parking lot basically directly joins the street, so as you come off.
Correct.
Through the street and go right to the park.
Correct, okay.
I just wanted to. Just reducing the minimum setback, what was it, twenty-five or fifteen?
Forty feet.
Forty, okay, that's why I was concerned by the, the terminology yard. That, that was.
Yeah, I was just gonna go first to that front yard.
Okay, thank you.
That was a good question, thanks.
Any other new business?
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Um, cause I know we got rid of a number of committees. I, I'd like the law enforcement reports, is that just at one meeting, like at the beginning of the month? Or have we lost that with the committees?
No, so every, every board once a month.
Okay, so that will be a part of.
Yes, so you're gonna get all the graphs and reports.
Okay, that's.
Oh, let's see.
About safety wasn't listening to me.
Yes.
Wasn't listening to me about us, so next meeting we have to do planning and zoning publication.
Okay.
So, Mr. Coles, trustee Coles still there?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, we're, we're gonna wait until June. We wanna get all May's numbers, cause the Memorial Day's gonna be a big one, so.
He's got plans.
Yeah.
What are you gonna do?
They're relaxing the masks, people are going back to work.
Yeah, I have a question on, to do with the Cook Big Fest. In regards to the speech game, the timing of where it rolls in the way, how's that gonna affect the Cook Big Fest itself getting to the farm?
Well, so go ahead, Chief.
Uh, obviously, we're gonna have some issues with the detouring and we have to sit down and talk to, uh, Carl and see what he, what his plan is. It's a lot of it's gonna be up to him on, on how he wants to get people in and out of there and we'll assist in whatever way we can to, to make it, uh, safe and, and fluid. But yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an issue. Uh, Park District is already planning to have their, their runs right through downtown, that's not gonna happen. So it's getting the word out a little bit more and it's gonna be basically going back to the drawing board and, uh, and coming up with something. And I don't think it was something that would, that was really thought of, uh, when they first decided to bring back Cook Creek Days. It was all.
Ah, they knew.
They need a traffic guy.
They, they knew.
They need you.
No, they need a traffic guy.
Now they need you.
They need a traffic guy.
Toby.
Deputize Toby.
Toby.
He's our liaison to the Greek.
Yeah. Stay inside.
Trustee Matt, you really have tried to do a good job of communicating, um, when we started about a month ago. Um, and once we got the word out, we received a lot of criticism from people, but I think by now, we've answered a lot of questions. But there is a, I don't know if you've seen it yet, but there's a published detour map that shows everybody how, how to get around. Most of the areas will be closed, but, yeah, those three blocks of State Street will be closed for about three months. So everybody's gonna have to learn the detour routes, but we had it all prepared, so we're not. They're all bases, how it's expected. Obviously, if you rate it, whatever, it'll be adjusted, I think that was discussed in the last meeting.
They discussed that position in their meeting and basically it's, it's almost identical in a sense. Code, then, to be exactly the same, except for a slight change. Turning off one into. That was presented, we talked about, we had.
One thing that just came to mind, and this might be something Cook Creek could do, is temporary signage where they might, uh, depending where people come from, I mean, people coming from seventy-two, if you get them to go up Route Twenty and Allen Road, um, there was some temporary signage that the festival would put up, that might help a lot, rather than people coming from seventy-two through State Street.
Yeah.
But even if they do come seventy through State, it'll just be, you know, that door back to, um, Jackson to Hart and back on, back on. It's gonna be like, watch way around and it's gonna be this way and just the, uh, obviously going out to the north, it'll be the way ahead, so they'll try to be straight into one direction, provide pedestrian safety and, uh, uh, one lane that we should have to walk on, so.
But I think you had, you bring up a good, I hate it. The detour around?
Yes.
I believe, what's the street?
Park.
Park.
Oh, yeah, John has sideline.
Is that?
Uh, I, I don't know if the, uh, west side's made.
No, there's no, there's no sidewalk.
No?
And so during Cook Creek, you're more gonna have heavier than normal traffic and cars trying to park and pedestrians walking, cause they're, well, pedestrians can walk through downtown.
Well, let me just mention, we're gonna have no parking.
Oh, yeah.
The funeral hall was concerned about parking on, on Park Street, so we're gonna post no parking signs on Park Street.
Okay, so, but we're still gonna have pedestrian traffic if they can't come downtown to go to Cook Creek, and they've gotta go around.
First of all, pedestrian traffic can't, the sidewalks will never be closed during.
So they can't in, well, yeah, okay.
Pedestrian traffic will not be blocked.
Okay, that is not a concern. We should probably make sure to announce that pedestrians should use the sidewalks on State of safety, do not use Park. There are sidewalks on most sides of Park Street. Is there? Yes.
Okay.
Well, you need to tell Carl what he needs and start doing now, which you guys need to start getting the information out, that all traffic to and from the fest will be off of Aliver. As if eighty percent of them get it, the other twenty percent will figure it out.
All right, uh, any other?
Detour science events.
I have, I have two things. First thing is, I'm gonna need some help. We have to come up with an appointment process for a public board, meaning that we've got appointments that we have to make um, for the beautification committee and I believe the business development commission. And one of the things that this board has talked about for a long time has been the fact that we need to do more of a public application process that makes sense rather than just reappointing people to serve, because there's a lot of people that take interest in things from time to time and may not know the process of which to apply for that there's even open. So I'm, I'm asking for the board's help in trying to figure out a way that we publicize that there are openings and that people are encouraged to apply and that. So, um, it's something that we've talked about and that, uh, the mayor has sole appointment authority with the consent of the board. I, I don't like going around and picking somebody to serve. You know, I think that it needs to be a fair and equitable process and that's why I'm asking for the board's help and ideas in how we're going to do that moving forward and that it's consistent across all commissions because that, you know, in a year, we're gonna have to reappoint somebody to the planning and zoning committee, or commission. In two years, we're gonna have to go through that and then we have appointments coming up. There's a reappointment that has to come up here for the police division. So I think that we just need to develop a process, stick with it, like you guys are into it, because I also, I don't like the way that we have been doing it, which is, okay, you are serving, you get to be appointed. So it's just something to think about, we'll chew on it and then we'll bring it back for discussion later tonight. The other announcement I'd like to make is happy birthday to trustee Holder.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
I'm not going to make you sing, happy birthday, but Toby, I'll probably say that.
Can I know my prior, there'd be a cake with a candle.
Thank you for waiting till the end for that, so, yes, extended theme of New Year's experience.
All right, so now, um, we need to go into executive session to talk about, um, the, uh, consider appointment of a, uh, specific employee.
You can, for motion, roll call votes, go to executive session, please.
And I have, and I have a motion to go into executive session.
Move it, thanks, Skip. No, Mr. Kojak, you need to specify, please, for section two C one.
For section two C one.
Thank you.
So.
All right.
All right, uh, questions, comments, roll call vote.
Ms. Holder.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coles.
Yes.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
We should pass six zero.